...more traffic because patients were coming in there to get their medicine. That corner was safe. Look at that corner now. There's no dispensary there. It's probably one of the most dangerous ones again in I B. There's four shopping parts parked in front of it. There's somebody selling something in front of it. And that's because there is no licensing regulations, and that's what we want to change.
Thank you Eugene Marcus.
I'm gonna try to keep this one short.
Ah, young lady, you're in I B.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Oh, perfect. So, yes, just so we go through this again, every panelist is going to have a minute to answer the question. So that's four minutes total per question. We have three more people with you on there, so I think that is a reminder to the panelists that we want to keep it short, um, so that we can make sure that everyone speaks, and that if you feel like somebody has represented your point, definitely pass it along, so we can move along with the questions. But it is important to get all the different perspectives, because different people do answer different parts of questions. So, thank you Marcus.
Yes, sir. In two thousand and ten, the legislature actually took on some additional, the legislature actually took on some additional action. And they looked at how far a dispensary should be away from what it should be away from. And what they determined, in all of their wisdom, was schools were the only thing that was identified as anything that needed a reason to have a distance requirement. And they put one in from property line to property line of six hundred feet. And what we did was go beyond what the state did. And we put a property line to property line of three hundred feet from each other, because of the concerns that were raised by community members. When we put this out to the community, and we asked them, the community that doesn't shake their head at every answer, when we put it out to them, they told us what would be sensible and what would make sense. Now, at this point, what we have is from property line to property line, this building ends about right there. So, three hu- if this were to be a dispensary, three hundred feet away from this property line to the next property line could be a property that we'd be able to accommodate. Now, you're saying that if we keep leapfrogging like that, that could be a proliferation. The problem there is, there's only going to be enough dispensaries open that can pay the rent, the utilities, the employees, the labor for the security, and all the other operational requirements that are necessary. They're not revolving doors. Nobody has had a revolving door. Just so you know, San Diego was completely unregulated. Two opened up. Then one closed and another opened up. Two has always been near I B. Two. That's your answer, sir. Two.
Thank you so much. So, sir, in the green shirt.
Thanks. Um, now since federal government is still illegal, I guess IRS won't allow, uh,
Deductions depending on how you work.
That's right.
Deductions depending on-
So, did everyone understand that? That because the federal government doesn't recognize, uh, medical cannabis, the question is, the IRS have now stopped doing deductions, and your, what's your question?
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, I guess this also limit, you're three hundred, right? And that was something that was thrown out by the city council when I left the meeting, and used to pull that off the ass of anybody. Um, so, basically, that's gonna limit anybody, I mean, yeah, nonprofits, but they have to make enough money to operate. And so that's gonna limit, because if you can't deduct, everything's taxable. Everything that comes in is taxable. Right?
Yes. Um, I'm going to answer that in the way that I understood it from news reports. Everybody seems to word things differently. But they say, depending on who your accountant is and how you fill out your tax statements, the IRS will not allow you to deduct your labor expenses. Marijuana, depending on what substance it is, is a flower. Thanks.
Yeah, let's go, yeah, Holly, and then Vay, so we're moving on.
Okay, so, I totally get your point. Yes, it is hard for people, just like any business, to start out and have enough capital. And when you see that you can't deduct anything, it becomes even more hard. Um, and to follow up, to break that down, you know, all of these, again, have to be given business licenses by the city of Imperial Beach. And, obviously, it seems that they're not gonna just, with so much opposition already, and with the regulations already in place, they're not really gonna allow this wide proliferation of them in Imperial Beach in the first place. Um, so I think we have to remember that, and, you know, it, it really is a matter of how many spaces are available, and how many people actually have the kind of money to be able to do so, and would, with all the other, there's several other municipalities in San Diego County right now voting on medical marijuana propositions, and they're all going through the same sort of questionings, and the truth is, it's not gonna be a sudden flood to here, you know what I mean? Someone isn't gonna travel, personally, myself as a patient, I wouldn't travel from where I live in San Diego down to Imperial Beach to try and find my medicine. It's impractical. I don't have a car. It's not gonna happen. So, I'll just sit there.
Thanks.
Yeah, the federal government is doing everything they can to make it difficult on us, including harassing us with the IRS. Particularly ironic when you have to be nonprofit in the first place, and pay yourselves taxes to boot. And that you'd be paying income tax with burdens we don't give anybody else. But regardless of that, there's still a lot of sick people here who need medicine. The few people that might ever have any thoughts of getting involved with this, with the idea that they're gonna buy a Lamborghini or something, are soon disabused of it by reality. It's not like that at all. It's very difficult to keep a place open and provide good medicine to patients on a nonprofit basis. It's quite challenging, and you're right, they're not helping.
Thank you Eugene.
Um, I, I think that's also a really great question. The federal issue is that cannabis is still illegal. There is still the Controlled Substances Act. Step one substance, that means the feds still consider marijuana regardless of medical use or otherwise, not legal. Folks, that is very quickly changing. There was a hearing last week in the federal district court, um, in District of Columbia, that is to reschedule cannabis. There's actually currently legislation that is already introduced to Congress by a congressman that would change that exact issue, sir, you spoke of, with regards to the deduction of the taxes and such. The federal threat is leaving. And once, the federal, uh, situation of the other issue is that the highest court in the state of California has already ruled, um, not only the highest court in the state, but also the highest court in the nation. The Supreme Court refused to hear the appellate court case, or refused to hear the appeal. And the appellate court case stood, which said that federal law does not trump state law on the issue of medical cannabis. Even though it's still illegal federally, and even though the state decided to legalize it for medical use and legalize distribution to patients, one does not conflict with the other. We can have both. And does that mean the feds can come in and, and decide to waste their resources on, uh, uh, shutting down folks that are in compliance with state law? Yes, they can do that. But that's why we have elected officials that are in Congress trying to change that base and stop that waste of our taxpayer dollars from being wasted on an issue that is regulated by the states.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And now it's your turn to back.
Me? Yes.
I'm so sorry.
I have a gray area still with the proposition S. There is no regulation as to the amount. They just say three years allowed in Imperial Beach, that's it, that's fine. This is a business, right? You've got a business license, it's private business. If I want to open up something, and somebody else wants to open up something, they'll say, alright, you're allowed to have so many in Imperial Beach. That's a gray area. There's nothing that says, yes. This is the amount you can open. That's one of the gray areas that I dislike. Okay. Can you tell me that there is a thing that says, yes, there's only a certain amount that can be opened? Or they're giving you, okay, certain amount that can be, within city limits, a certain distance and distance and distance? And you're saying it's non-profit?
It's more profit.
But I still want to know, is there a limit as to the amount? You're saying you can't make any money, and that won't be flooded? Probably not. But I'm saying, I want to know that there's one, six, or eight, or ten, within the city limits. No.
Let me just, I wanna say real quick, I, it was what I had said just a moment ago. For two years, San Diego wasn't bothering dispensaries. They were allowed to open. They had over two hundred, and last we checked, two hundred and forty-some odd that were open. That were open.
Illegal.
That were open without business licenses, that were legal by state standards. They, with that proliferation, we have from Sixteenth Street all the way down, all the way over into San Ysidro, out of all that area, there were two.
The next closest one was on Alomar, in Chula Vista.
So, for miles and miles, we had two. So, when San, if San Diego has none, F, F, but this is, let me throw this in. The both mayoral candidates, I can't say it, both mayoral candidates.
Mayoral.
Thank you, I'm putting an extra, anyway, both, both candidates in San Diego are actually lobbying, telling their voters, all voters, that they are going to allow for safe access in neighborhoods in San Diego. Now, even if they don't, when San Diego had a, a, a ton open, only two facilitated for this entire area. At that whole time. So, the honest answer is when San Diego facilitates, which they will be doing, and the northern counties cities will be doing, you'll find the same two, either open here, or one here, or one in San Diego. But there's not gonna be more than that, because it has never sustained more than that. They have to pay rent, utilities, and, and employees. All that costs, I have a business. That costs a lot of money.
I can understand that. But I just have, I have a thing saying, I want a number.
Right, but you-
And if I can't have it for minutes-
It was one last point. How many numbers of businesses and nonprofits do you put? You, there's not, you can't, you don't tell, uh, there's not any in the city ordinance, as I said before, there's nobody, there was nothing for us to use to say, there can only be one nonprofit organization. It didn't make, it didn't fit.
And if you're saying that our people will use facilities in Imperial Beach, and not the one out of the area, then we don't need that many, we don't need that much, they should be able to say, three, or two, or four, or eight.
Our visitor, like somebody else- All the time respond, oh, Holly is- Oh, sorry.
And the other thing is, there's absolutely no way to get it under a medical facility.
Right there.
Not anywhere. Or no, uh, medical overseer of any kind. So, medical is totally out of it. It's a business that's non-profit, and we don't know how many will open in Imperial Beach.
Okay, so I'm gonna respond. Um, thank you. Um, so, like Marcus said, it's hard to say in an ordinance, an exact number because of legal issues. One of the things that they've been doing to get rid of dispensaries all over San Diego County has been to threaten the landlords that they get their property from, and say, we're gonna charge you with a federal crime if you continue to rent out to dispensaries. Um, it's been ruled that that's pretty unconstitutional, but that was what's being used. So, there are, even out of all the spaces that are available, number one, many landlords would not be willing to give it to a dispensary. They would not be willing to let a dispensary rent out their space. Number two is, like Marcus said, there's been two for the two years that it was fine, and, you know, there was people that were aware they were there, and they were being used by patients here in Imperial Beach, so there's no reason to expect that suddenly there will be a drastic increase. Um, so, we can't, like, give you that exact number that's, like, in a bubble, but what we can tell you is that, given the restrictions that are written in this bill, the way that the city, um, conducts its business license review, and its, basically, enforcement issues, there's no way that there's gonna be a proliferation of them in Imperial Beach. It's just really implausible. Um, and I wish I could give you an exact number, but again, it's impossible because of legal reasons. And I'll finish up by saying, yes, it has to be a nonprofit, and it's not currently available in Imperial Beach any other way right now.
There is one other really good reason that we didn't write a cap into the law. It would be ridiculous for us to deliberately write a law that would not withstand legal scrutiny. To deliberately write something that was unconstitutional, or would not hold, or that was in conflict with state law, it would just be a big waste of all of our time, and all of our money, and all of us and all of you would end up starting over on this whole thing a couple of years down the road. When we write a law, it's gonna have to be one that will hold up. Now, the city council didn't do that. We could've gone the route to sue them over it. We did Proposition S instead. It made a lot more sense for everybody. We have a lot of support in this community to write a good law that will regulate access. But whatever number we put, whether it was one or ten, it would be illegal to do that. This is something, I know some people don't like it. Before I got sick, I would've been far on the other side of the line, but this is legal in California. And we need to treat it like anything else.
Thank you so much. Eugene, you have a minute?
Um, yes, and, uh, thank you so much, Rachel, ma'am. Thank you so much for that question. I'd like to address that. I'm gonna stand up too, so you folks can hear me in the back. Um, there actually, um, is, it may not be legal to put any kind of number on how many dispensaries can open, or how much medicine a patient can consume. And the thing is, is we found that out when the state legislature in '04 tried to say a patient that is legal is one that has six plants. If you have seven, you're not legal. They tried to create that clarity. And then when that went up to the courts, the court said, look, folks, you can't put arbitrary limits. That issue isn't legal. That would be an unconstitutional change to the original legislation in Prop 215. That's why arbitrary limits simply may not be constitutional. Now, currently, in the state of California, there are a number of counties that do not have numerical caps on dispensaries, that have regulations. Number one, San Diego County. Our unincorporated areas of San Diego County has an ordinance that regulates dispensaries. And yes, the feds came in and shut the one down that did open. But guess what, folks? Um, because they don't have a number that is a cap, but because of the zoning and the operational requirements, they are limited. Um, other counties include Santa Barbara, Tullare, Selma for drag, Dunsborough, Long Beach, Placerville, I could go on and on. There's a number of counties that don't have those. And the issue with the medical facility, the one regulated place that did exist in the county of San Diego, the first thing they did was hire pharmaceutical techs to run the facility and provide medicine to the patients. And just because they can't bring in an actual pharmacist to do it, because it's still federally illegal, and when that changes, believe me, folks will. But what they did is the closest thing to it. Folks who have that pharmaceutical training were dispensing that medicine to the patients in a licensed, regulated facility.
Thank you so much. Okay, so who else has a question, if I could see a raise of hands?
Did you have a question, Eugene? Vay, Vay would be if anyone asked, and I don't think your medical question is for being a dispensary, did I answer correctly?
It is, it is dispensed by a medical doctor. You have to have a, have to have a prescription to go in there, and that is dispensed by a doctor.
Yeah, not anybody can walk in.
Yeah, no.
You have to go to a doctor.
You have to go to a doctor to get-
And, and they- I think what might be good is there are, like, a lot of background questions, a lot of things that we might take for granted, and like, a lot of, like, ancillary issues that deal with this. Um, so, like, afterwards, I think as a community coming together and, like, talking about that with your, each other, and neighbors, is like a really great way to move the dialogue forward, which is exactly what we're trying to do. Um, but right now, we wanna just address specific questions that, uh, go to Prop S. Um, and so, also, I'm gonna say, we'll start with, uh, Vay this first time. We're gonna try to start with a different person each time, so we can rotate in a way that makes sense. Um, okay, great. So, Jersey, did you still wanna go, or?
Um, Reeve, I just had a, uh, follow-up question for Vay. It's kind of a two-part question. So, okay, so you said you can't get, you said you can't get your medications in Imperial Beach, right?
Right.
Okay, and then, uh, could you physically grow and manipulate your own medications yourself? To do all the stuff that Marcus said you would have to do?
I knew before I ever tried, that I'm a terrible burner. My grandma, I, I tell you, my grandma grew up picking cottons, and, and she could grow anything, and if she was still alive, she'd take care of it for me. But, but, she had a lot of nice things to say about me, but, but she, she knew I couldn't grow anything. I didn't try. It would've taken months. I was very ill. I seriously believe that I would've died. I would've also had to grow quite large amount for my needs. Some people are able to use very small amounts, smoke marijuana, and treat anything successfully with that. I was not one of them. And so, I couldn't do that, and I couldn't do it in time. And, and it's really crazy to expect people to do that.
So, what, what would happen with you if all the dispensaries were in San Diego? What's the situation?
I would be forced to choose between suffocating and doing business with a drug dealer. I, I don't wanna be faced with that choice. I don't wanna see any of my money go south, or to support those monsters. It's morally wrong. And I'd really rather not suffocate either.
Something I, like, heard people asking about, like, worrying about younger people, and I know, so, I look like I'm about eighteen, and most, I'm actually twenty-seven, I can't get, like, packets of cigarettes. I've actually never been allowed into a dispensary, because I've never had a recommendation, which I'm sure is probably the case for a lot of people here, unless you're law enforcement. So, I actually have a question about protecting the patients, I'm just wondering if you can answer it, and, like, in a bunch, but, so, as opposed to, like, how are we going to, how is this going to protect, like, youth or people from not coming in? That are in patients, like, if there are unfair bans again, or, um, the dispensaries are shut down, or there are unfair restrictions, people are getting arrested, what if, like, local law enforcement and the city government isn't abiding by the new regulations? What's gonna happen to patients like Vay? Is that possible?
The sickest people are the ones that are most at risk.
I'd like to chime in on that, because that goes right to a, to an issue. Back in two thousand and nine, Bonnie Luminas took it upon herself to try to shut down all dispensaries in San Diego. She did a massive raid. When she did that, I did a letter-writing campaign, uh, to the attorney general's office. And I thought it was a well-written letter, uh, I got lots of compliments, I had lots of people who copied it and sent it as well. I got a return email that said, "The district attorney in each county is elected, is an elected official." Although the attorney general could investigate criminal matters, civil matters are up to the civil grand jury, and up to the voters. So, subsequently, the same two thousand and nine, two thou- I'm sorry, this was in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, in two thousand and nine late, the civil grand jury of San Diego County was, act was tapped by the attorney general based on that letter-writing campaign. And the attorney general, at that point, I'm sorry, um, was, was, uh, the San Diego civil grand jury was tapped, and at that point, they conducted a, uh, an investigation. That investigation led to the two thousand and ten medical marijuana, San Diego civil grand jury findings and recommendations. Those recommendations included the district attorney, they included recommendations to the sheriff, included recommendations to each of the eighteen municipalities, and the San, the county of San Diego, unincorporated areas. What the grand jury told every municipality was to shut down any location that did not have a license. Make a licensing regulation scheme for dispensaries to open in each area. None of them did so, and when they did it, we contacted the civil grand jury, and the civil grand jury came back with an email, with a one-liner, and said, "The civil grand jury has done its investigation and made its recommendations. It can do nothing else. It is up to the voters." And here we are.
Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you so much, and now it's Vay.
Can I ask a way, uh?
No, we're gonna move on.
So, you know, I, I, I want a few to know on us people here. I'd just like to get a little bit of clarification. Uh, you, it was mentioned that when this came forward, that you had abundance of signatures of people who really wanted to be in the city, that there's plenty of patients within the city and without the outlaying areas. But then you also mentioned that trying to keep a business afloat would be so hard to do. Well, I'm, I'm pretty simple in terms of supply and demand. If you can have patients who can get as much as they want, whenever they want, which I'm assuming is appropriate for medical marijuana, I'm not, I'm sure you know, I am. But how is it that you can sit here and honestly say that it would be so hard, and that there wouldn't be a lot of, if you drive down Palm Avenue, there's four fast food restaurants within a five-block, five, six-block area. Same with bars, same with all those things. So, I'd like a little bit of clarification, and I'd just also like to know, if anybody on the panel is going to be one of those people who do open a dispensary?
I'm so sorry, can you repeat the, do you understand the question?
I, I just want, I just wanna know for clarification on, on, because the number of, of dispensaries keeps popping up, but how many there could possibly be? And you would say it was, be sold out because of the economic hardships, the middle write-offs, and this and that. But also, we talked about-
Two years of exams.
Right, but again, we also talked, you've also talked about the amount of users in the city who want to have these dispensaries, plus the outlaying areas. So, I would imagine if I were, I'm in the chocolate business, if there's lots of people on chocolate, and I was only a chocolate shop, guess what, there would be a lot more.
I just wanna say, if you keep saying users that sign it, it's actually supporters.
Well-
I apologize. I didn't understand the question, but Eugene does, and he's actually gonna start us off. You have a minute.
Oh, thank you. We, uh-
No, I'm a supporter, and I don't use it. I'm a supporter, and I don't use it.
Um, I guess, I guess I'd like to start out with what Vay said, and, 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 sir, like, we gave you the, the due respect, when, when you were speaking, I just respectfully asked for the same. Um, and I do have a minute, so, um, thank you. Uh, the number of dispensaries in the city of Imperial Beach will be maybe two, maybe three. First, let me answer the last question. I don't wanna open a dispensary. I'm not interested in opening one up if Prop S passes. I'm not even interested in opening one up if another municipality passes. That's not what I'm interested in. What I'm interested in is seeing that patients get safe access to a medicine that helps them. The number of dispensaries in the city will be two, maybe three. And that is based on the number of not only patients that are in the city, but again, the availability of properties and everything else. As your example with the chocolate thing, um, sir, everybody can have chocolate. Anybody over twenty-one can go to a bar. Anybody who wants to eat can go to any of the fast food places. That leaves the market open for thousands and thousands, perhaps twenty thousand something plus folks live in the city, and I'm not just registered, but live in general in the city. How many of them are qualified patients who have a recommendation from either a medical doctor or a D O, a doctor of osteopathy? Those are the only two doctors in the state who can issue a recommendation for cannabis. Out of all those people, I promise you, it's not as many as, like, can you chop? It's not as many as go eat fast food. It's not even as many as drink alcohol. It's a very small and limited number. There's simply not enough patients to support the proliferation, sir, that you spoke of earlier. Three hundred dispensaries, or twenty, or whatever else you guys, uh, uh, have heard from the city council and others, is not possible in the city of Imperial Beach.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Marcus.
Go ahead.
Sorry, ma'am.
Let her, let her talk. Can you have the laundry, the laundry?
Yeah, actually, here's the thing, so I'm gonna pitch on-
I was trying to ask him, and he's, I didn't understand, is it medical doctor issues, doctors, things, and what's the other?
Doctor of osteopathy, that's a D O, so there are two, uh, there are many doctors in the state of California. There's chiropractors, dentists, and, and other folks that have a license to practice medicine of some sort. The only two that can issue a recommendation for a patient to use cannabis is either a M D, which is a medical doctor, um, licensed by the Board of Medicine, or a D O, which is a doctor of osteopathy. Uh, tho- those are the only two types. Both are, uh-
Those are the two kinds that can prescribe-
What is osteopath?
Uh, you know, I'm not a doctor, I'm more-
Those are the two kind of doctors that can prescribe drugs in California.
Um, so, please.
Just tell me what an osteopath is. Tell me what it is.
It is a different kind of medical degree. They-
I'm gonna Google it.
They're somewhat more natural in scope, but it is a, they are a legal medical doctor in California. Though, those are the only, no other chiropractors or physician assistants, or nothing but a real doctor can write a recommendation in California, despite what some people might say. You have to be a real doctor that can prescribe drugs to write a recommendation.
A doctor of dentistry can actually prescribe some drugs, but a doctor of dentistry cannot prescribe medical marijuana.
I just want to know what osteo, or whatever.
Osteo, well, I'd be glad to look that up.
I'm looking it up on Wikipedia.
Can we answer my question?
Yeah, I apologize. So, just for clarification, so when you have a question about the question itself or a response, you can do this symbol, and that's not that you're asking a question, it's that there's a point of discussion, yeah, that you want clarified, and that'll help smooth the process. Because we do want to still answer your question, we have three more minutes to answer that. Um, and at the end, I will have an answer for you as to what an osteopath is, so Marcus, please, a minute to answer.
I'm still searching my head for an osteo, what was your question?
I can, I can answer right off.
Well, the number of dispensaries, I've already answered, and we had the conversation, that for two years of, two years of unregulated in San Diego, none could be open in San, in Imperial Beach. Two were open on Palm Avenue, none were open for miles after that. So, two, I really mean it.
There, there could've been fifteen right there all along. Why weren't there?
I hate to keep asking, but we didn't make a difference if it's in legal business and illegal business. Big damn difference. If you can do illegally, a lot more people would be willing to.
Sir, the only people that- The only people that are gonna maintain that those businesses were illegal in nature are the people that know on us. They were legal in every conceivable way in the state of California, except that the city that they were in refused to issue them a business license. And they were doing that illegally under the color of law. Now, if you wanna maintain that you don't like a city way, that's your prerogative. And along with everybody else, you get to vote. And I would defend it in grave. You're right to do so, and to say what you please about it. But the truth is that there is a limit on how many places would really open or stay open in Imperial Beach. And if there were a few more, I'd like to be the first person to say, "So what?" If a patient, this is a person to start with who's sick. And I'm sorry, but it's not up to you whether or not they're sick. It's up to the doctor. And if the person is sick and they're going to get medicine, if there were several CVSs in town, uh, or pharmacies where a person could go and maybe get a better price, or a generic, or a better deal, or a different kind of medicine that would help them more, or maybe one of the pharmacies had a place where they could go and talk to other people, they'd have what they do, where they'd feel safe and welcome, and could be a positive part of the community. My collective that was just raided in San Ysidro is currently building fifteen modern, beautiful trash cans on San Ysidro Boulevard that we donated to the Better Business, to the, the, the Chamber of Commerce, the Better Business Association. That's the reality of what these good clubs do. Are they all perfect? Of course not. But as patients, we try and support the ones that are better and work for the good of the community. And that's the truth.
Yes. So there's two more people to answer your question, but really, what was your point or your clarification?
Well, I think one of the other things that limits the demands, they ain't gonna have so much supply, is, uh, I believe the federal, uh, federal audit, if you have one of these, uh, these permits to use, uh, medicines, you have to turn in the guns.
So that's an addition, I'm so sorry. That's an additional point, which is a really good one, and I definitely wanna create community conversation, but the, the, the point of procedure is only if you have a question about something that was said. But you have an additional point, which is awesome, but let's wait till the end so we can get everyone's questions answered. So Marcus and Holly, I think you both have a minute to answer the question if you want it.
Okay, I'll be really quickly. Um, so we're trying to address different points that different people bring up. So when this gentleman brought up ideas about non-happy deductibles, um, under the federal government, that's why we're talking about it's really hard to open up a business. Yes, there are a lot of supporters here. Yes, there are definitely patients here who definitely need their medicine. But it doesn't mean that it's everyone. It's not, you know, all over the place. The demand is definitely, definitely there, but that doesn't mean that every single person is demanding it. And I just also wanna say, like, in terms of people being a supporter but not being a patient themselves, like, it's absolutely ridiculous to assert that there are just people who wanna be a patient. Because I work for a gay rights organization, and we have what we call straight allies. And to say the same sort of assertion there, that to, in order to support someone who's gay or lesbian or transgender means that you yourself wanna be gay, lesbian, or transgender, just absolutely does not make any sense. It means that you support someone else, and you wanna support them as a patient to have the right to their medicine. So, yes, there is a demand. No, there's not, uh, outnum, like, an alarming demand of every single person. But the demand of the number of patients that are here in Imperial Beach is extremely important, because we as a community should wanna take care of every single member of our community in the way that best suits their health and beneficial needs.
And sir, in the back, Jersey, you're up next.
I only have like four or five questions. I think I'd get it, we're all together. Number seventeen says all staff and records must be qualified patients. Why would that be forward? It's definitely the inverse. Why, why should all staff or all directors be medical doctors, medical nurses? I wanna have medical society legitimizing it. I wouldn't wanna have just patients, because I've, that's not a level of professionalism. Um, all overnight, uh, signage, must, overnight security preventing of unauthorized entry. But when I'm sixteen feet, I have big blinking parking lights and big old security lights. That notify people, "Hey, there's a drug dealer right there. There's marijuana." So it should be a street. You can have like sixteen zooming cameras, but you have the street lights. "Here's a dispensary. Go in it." And that's that which is real too. If we allow people from Imperial Beach, would they only be allowed for Imperial Beach zip code legal residents? Or could someone from Hillcrest or Mission City come down and use them? So if we just say, "Fine, we'll take care of our patients, if only our patients," that would limit the supply. But if we're the only city that says, "Okay, it's now legal in Imperial," yeah, we would have to let some people through alcohol. And I had, lived cancer in 2010. I've done six months of chemo. I've done, um, a good, I had bark medicine. So I gained thirty-five pounds knowing I was gonna be six months of chemo, so I wouldn't have the racing proceeds. So I then, I then went to, well, once I gave chemo, I'm gonna bark it up and lose thirty pounds. So I ate like a pig. I did, um, double, um, double gas. I smoked cocaine, bulk of an epidemic. So I, I gained weight over the whole chemo process, even though it didn't taste good. Who cares what the food tastes good? If it comes like a living or dying, eat your seat. And what about Marinol? Because that would go to world class, the federal government, and the government and has Marinol, it's, uh, legal than, um, prescribing.
Okay, that was a lot. I hope that, yes, thank you. So, um, really quick, I'm gonna take the points of discussion, so, yes...
Well, I do a comment on this.
No, that's not what they're for, but, good. And then you in the back?
Mine was, uh, basically a comment on that. I have family members that died from cancer. And I really resent the fact that you sort of implied that they should know that they're gonna get sick, so they should do something about it. That's not possible for a lot of cancer patients. It was possible for you, and that's great. My mom couldn't eat. My mom couldn't talk. My mom didn't wanna have marijuana. Believe it or not, I tried. I don't use it, but I knew a lot of cancer patients. I work in a wig salon that specializes in helping chemo therapy patients. I can tell from personal experience with my clients, marijuana makes a difference for cancer patients. And that's why I'm here. I wanna know that it's gonna be safe and that it's gonna be accessible for people that need it.
Okay, so thank you so much. And, and that's exactly why I think so many of us are here doing what we do. Um, there were a lot of regulatory questions, so if you could quickly address them, maybe each person picking one, maybe not, I don't know, or trying to address all three, but let's try to quickly go through it, because we don't have much more time. And to that end, is anyone else going to have a question?
I'm just gonna answer and ask you whatever.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, I have that. I bet. I have that one. Okay.
Well, why don't you go ahead and address it?
Please start.
Um, no, let me just read this really quick so we can get the, um, "An osteopathic medicine is a branch of the medical profession in the United States. Osteopathic physicians are licensed to practice medicine and surgery in all fifty states and are recognized in fifty-five other countries, including all Canadian provinces." So that sort of talks about broadly, but it's basically a profession closer to mainstream medicine, adopting modern public health and biomedical principles. They become gradually achieving full practice. Oh, sorry, that's more of the background of it. Um, it's holistic health. Um, it, the distinction between the MD and the DO professions has eroded, and they've actually come together more and more, um, and they now intersect quite a bit. So it's a holistic approach to health.
More with vitamins and drugs and stuff. And that's a great frame for IV. If we could frame that message, you know, to bring in those doctors and those holistic healers, that is a great image for us. It rents our buildings and it just brings a great democratic...
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so let's start with Eugene, because I think he hasn't started in a while.
Um, thank you very much for that question. Um, that was a lot of points that you brought up, and very important ones. The reason, first of all, I'll start out with point seventeen, or the seventeen, uh, operational, uh, requirement that you mentioned where everybody has to be a patient. State law currently mandates that only patients have access to medical cannabis. So even though a doctor can actually give you the recommendation to use it, that doctor will not be able to prescribe it as a DEA prescription, like you can get filled at the pharmacy. So they're not allowed to touch the marijuana. Doctors can't touch it. Right now, it's illegal for them to do so. They can only say that they recommend, um, uh, that a patient uses it after evaluating their condition. As far as the Marinol issue, Marinol is a synthetic, again, not a natural, a synthetic, um, uh, extraction, uh, I'm sorry, replication of just one compound that is found out of the sixty-six known compounds inside of cannabis. That's THC. That's it. That's the only one that's in Marinol, THC. Now, you have CBD, CBN, all of these other, sixty-six other ones that help, that have therapeutic benefit, that help with wasting syndrome, help with appetite, help with anti-inflammation, and many, many other things that are not in Marinol. Marinol does not work for so many patients. Go through what you went through, sir. And I applaud you for fighting what you did. That's amazing that you survived such a thing. And, 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 and as the, uh, uh, lady mentioned earlier, not everybody can, um, uh, use that sort of medicine. Um, and I know that it would be nice to be able to say, "You know what? The pharmacies we have here, only IV residents can go inside." That's it. Unless you are living in 91932, you can't go get your prescription filled at CVS. It would be nice maybe for some people to say that, but it's not legal. It wouldn't be legal for us, or you, or anyone, to come in and say, "Unless you live in 91932, you cannot get your prescription filled here. That's just not legal." I deferred into, I couldn't get that to the...
As far as the signage, well...
I'm sorry, Holly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'll go really quickly. Um, as far as security goes, and why you want security guards and lights and things like that, um, there's actually been several studies done by different police departments across the country about this very issue. And actually, they find that these laws that require that there be, um, guidance and oversight over security around dispensaries has been shown to, in many cases, actually decrease crime rates in those neighborhoods. Um, so you can look up several studies if you're interested in looking for them yourself. UCLA did one in October of 2011 in Sacramento, and they found that the density of medical marijuana dispensaries was not associated with violent or property crime rates at all. Um, they also found that LA Police Chief Charlie Beck in 2009 actually said that banks are more likely to get robbed than medical marijuana dispensaries. And this is proven from the police departments that regulate these areas and go after crime. Um, and you're laughing at me when I asked about this, because they're talking about crime and pointing to crime being in a certain area. So it's actually more lucrative to have a big bank that says, "You can get money right here, right here," or to have a liquor store that says, "Open twenty-four hours. Get liquor all twenty-four hours," and expect that to happen, and they expect people to come and cause issues and cause things there. So I'll stop them at this point.
Um, on that particular point, it's something that, of course, we hear a great deal. Is it going to increase crime? And it's a really easy question to answer. We all know when all the dispensaries were open in San Diego, and when they were closed, and when some of them opened again. Now they're closed again. If you don't have the years, I can give them to you. Go look on the San Diego Sheriff's Department website for yourself, and watch crime go down when dispensaries open and up when dispensaries close. Unpacking violent crime, murder, rape, assault, robbery, go see for yourself. Here is the study from RAND, done in Los Angeles, that says that dispensaries decrease crime in neighborhoods. This isn't from Americans for Safe Access. This is from RAND. Under extreme pressure from law enforcement in Los Angeles, RAND withdrew this study. I have several others here that say the same thing. I'd be happy to give copies to anybody that'd like to have them. Dispensaries reduce crime in our neighborhoods. And yes, the law calls for the place being lit up. That seems to make sense to most folks, rather than them being dark. When I go somewhere, I, I wanna feel safe going there. And so we have reasonable regulations about security and cameras and so forth, for the safety of everybody involved. But the truth is, it's a lot more likely for there to be crime around a bank or a liquor store than a cannabis dispensary. That's the simple truth.